Joint meeting of the EDA and Planning Commission to order. Lisa, do you want to do the roll?
I think your computer, is it your computer volume?
Okay, from the Planning Commission, Elaine Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Lees. Commissioner Eric Brenner. Commissioner Rick Gelbman. Commissioner John Mungy. Commission City Council Liaison Lisa Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Andrew Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Alan Worm. And from the Economic Development Authority Chair Robert Duh. Vice Chair Kevin Fuller. Treasurer Don Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Shifsky. Let me see if he is. Zoom in, yeah.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
That's what I'm trying to see here.
This is really challenging our technology here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Tom Shifsky is joining us via Zoom. Commissioner Archie Vickerman. Mayor and Council Representative Terry Furlong.
Here.
Council Representative Tim Cole.
Here.
Executive Director, City Manager Brian Frandl.
Here.
And then from staff, we have Planning Consultant Eric Zweber, as I mentioned via Zoom, and then myself as the Planning Secretary.
And then Brett Carey, I believe, is not here.
Correct.
Is a Business Association representative.
That's everyone?
That is everyone.
Okay, done. Thank you. But I think we also had on the agenda to adopt the minutes from our March, was it March 18th?
Correct.
A special joint meeting. Does anybody have any corrections? Anybody read through them? If there aren't any clarifications or corrections, I think we can just by, you know, consent, just adopt them. I don't think we need to go through an actual motion. Then the next item would be to adopt the agenda for this evening. Since we really can't add anything at the last minute, again, I think just by unanimous consent, we'll adopt the agenda. Then we can move on to the adopt, or approval of the minutes. I did that before that, sorry about that. Then, meeting open to the public. Is there anybody on Zoom who might want to speak to anybody?
Yes, Tom Shifsky has his hand raised.
Probably did a bad mistake.
Tom, if you would like, Tom, if you would like to speak, could you send me your microphone?
Yeah. Yeah, this would be a member of the public. Not that he's not a member of the public, but...
Probably accidentally pressed the, he's probably trying to wave to us.
Need the gavel to keep you in order up there.
Boy, he's quick to get rid of that, isn't he?
Anybody? If not... If you spot someone, you can stop me, but otherwise, we'll just move along to our discussion items. The first one is discussing the redevelopment master plan potential for an update or review. So, Robert, I'll turn it over to you so I don't have to do all the speaking.
Sure, thank you. So, in late 2012, the, it was a joint effort between the EDA Planning Commission. We completed what is titled the Redevelopment Master Plan. Just a very brief history on it. The redevelopment master plan was born out of a grant that we, livable communities grant that we received as a city. And I see that, I look at this document as a more in-depth supplement to what our vision is as a city. Everyone in this room is likely familiar with the comp plan. That's, you know, very long-term, very broad outline direction that the city's taken on a number of fronts. And this document was developed, you know, for the purpose to align various agencies within the city and city council on, you know, what is the vision for the city? What do we, what do we desire? What do we see long-term? The plan, if you've had an opportunity to dig into it, it was, it was kind of laid out in three phases, three five-year phases. We're presently at the, basically, the end of the, nearing the end of the second five-year phases. And one of the recommendations in there with this document was that it's intended to be a living document and intended to be updated. And the desired, or at least the recommended update period was about 10 years in, and we're approaching that, that time period at this point. There has been a fair amount of discussion, or I guess, within the city at, at various times, as to how and if this document is getting used. I will say, from my perspective, we advertise it as a source document for the things that we do. It was adopted by Planning, EDA, and the city council at some point on the continuum. And having reviewed it in-depth recently, I would suggest whether it's by, by design or by dumb luck, a number of things that have happened in the city are fairly consistent with, with what was laid out in the redevelopment master plan. And now that we're all familiar with a number of the new developments and changes that have occurred in, you know, within the city over the last, you know, five to eight years, I'll say, it is creating a new dynamic. I think it does require us to revisit this plan and, and understand, are we, is, are we still aligned as a city and the agencies within the city and the council? Are we still aligned with the vision that it's laid out? What, you know, what has actually unfolded? What issues or possible other things should we be addressing as a result of what's actually happened? And so, that's kind of the primer on it, and I wanted to have a discussion about it because the document does lay out that it's EDA's responsibility to update and, and drive this document through its, through its life cycle, I guess. However, as a function, you know, the EDA thinks, I would say, quite a bit differently than planning. We approach things differently. We approach it, things purely from, you know, what is good for the economic health of, of the community. I think the Planning Commission, from my opinions, a recent conversation I've had with Elaine, I think Planning Commission is much more in tune with maybe the needs and the desires of the community and probably has a, from a planning perspective, either with the commissioners or with the folks that are, they regularly deal with, probably some expertise that the EDA does not have, that is very, would be very specific to updating this plan and getting it right in terms of, you know, what should we have in the community? You know, things like, you know, pedestrian traffic, bike lanes, stuff like, we never talk about that at the EDA, but it's very important to, you know, the community and what we're doing, and I understand that. And I think your group's much more in tune, which is why I think it's a very salient topic for the joint meeting here today. One, one other thing I would add is that it, it just so happens that today, we received a call from a potential property owner in town. I say potential. They're looking at a piece of property. They want to purchase it, but they want to sit down with us and they want to understand what, what is our vision for not only the property that they're looking to purchase, but the areas that surround them. And with, if you could imagine sitting down and laying out the comp plan and saying this is our vision, you don't get very far because it, again, it just, it doesn't have the specificity that folks like that are looking for. And, and that's where I think a document like this is extremely valuable. We actually can show people that are willing to invest in the community. We can lay this out and say, you know, here, this is the plan, and here, at whatever point on the continuum, we could say, you know, this is how it's unfolded to date, and here's where we're heading, and it'd be great to be able to say, we plan on doing an update to it, to reflect what's been done and where we're headed from here. So, that's a little long-winded, but, but that's the background, you know, of this plan. Morgan was, I think, originally asked to be here by someone else, but I begged him to make sure he was coming tonight because I think, I don't know if you participated individually, but his firm certainly did. And I don't know if you want to add anything to what I've had to say about the plan itself and your thoughts on...
Sure. Sure, thank you. So, as you mentioned, the city did receive a grant, I believe it was a fairly decent grant of $100,000, it's sticking in my head, so...
Well over six figures.
Yeah. And so, my participation, for all of you that maybe weren't here at that time, or maybe haven't gone through the master planning process or the comprehensive planning process, was to advise and assist and provide information that would fold into the master plan with respect to infrastructure, transportation, a lot of the hard, non-land use and zoning components that you see in a comprehensive plan that are more on the engineering side and the infrastructure side, and sharing some of the information that had either been prepared by past engineering consultants or city engineer, or, you know, what we were working on at the time, sharing information on our capital improvement plans and that sort of thing. There's some reference in the plan as well in terms of some of the documents that they're using as guiding documents to prepare this plan. And I've been through this process a few times with a few different cities, and what I can say is that, well, first of all, it's a very good plan. I think they did a great job. It was very comprehensive. It's important for both Commissions, City Council, to know, and I think after you've been through the process, it becomes a little more clear that plans are, they're just that. They're, they're guidelines. They're a plan that is never really truly meant to be implemented exactly as written. Our comprehensive plan is supposed to be looking out 20 years, right? This was maybe 15 years or something like that with the three different phases. And so, it's certainly no surprise to me that here, you know, reopening this and taking a look at the plan, that some things didn't come to fruition the way that maybe they were envisioned back in 2012, 2013, when it was being worked on. But there was a lot of good work that went into it. And there are some consistencies, or close consistencies, with some of the visioning that went on at that time. I agree with you that maybe, I wouldn't say it's dumb luck or coincidence, but I think that it's not like people were waving this around as we were going through the process, but I think that that speaks to the quality of the plan as it was completed in 2013, that some of the things that happened, that have happened since then till now, they made sense. They made sense to the layout of the city. They made sense with respect to downtown as kind of a core business area. They're maybe not perfectly illustrated here and envisioned, but a lot of that depends on who owns the property and who's ready to sell and who's ready to buy and develop. We're very fortunate here in North St. Paul to have had some people that are willing to develop that, you know, for 30 years or maybe even longer, that, that development potential has not been fully realized until just the last couple of years. So, that's a huge positive for our community. And so, in addition to saying that no plan is ever perfect, it's not a surprise to me that it's, you know, not exactly, we're not seeing now exactly it was lined up back then. You know, the, I guess, the desire or the impetus behind a want or a need to update, that, that is up to the Commission and the city council. I don't see it as a hard need. In my world, like if we have a sinkhole, we got to fix that right now, right? Or a pothole or something like that. A plan is only a guiding document. And so, if everybody agrees that there will be benefit for the community in terms of an update or a re-envisioning, or maybe even a reinterpretation with goals and objectives that are set by you all, to layer on top of a plan such as this so that it remains a living document and it's updated by the city, or it could be a consultant as well, too, but that's what matters. So, if there is value in what will come out of an update, or a re-envisioning, or a reinterpretation, or crossing out the things that, you know, have already developed, but what's next? What are the other potential items out there? That's what's going to matter for you as you kind of navigate this in terms of discussing, do we like this document? Do we think we can use this to take thing, other pieces of property, if there's interested parties that are looking at, you know, buying or redeveloping, especially if it comes into play where you're talking about districts, or more than just a parcel, or combining parcels, that's where you tend to get the most bang for your buck. And I'm not just saying the city buck, but in terms of like economic potential, tax increment, for example, right? It's a much easier thing to conceive of that being much on the positive side, much more on the positive or upside when you're talking about larger area, like the Anchor Block site, for example, as opposed to like a property here or there. So, that's what I would add on, on the, on the backside of your comments, and then I'm certainly available at, at the meeting to, you know, talk from an engineering side. But also, you know, at this point, Eric Zweber is our city planner. He also works with me at WSB. At that time, Nate Ahalt was the Community Development Director. Coincidentally, I actually reached out to him and had a nice conversation about this, and so between the two of us, we remembered a few things, like, oh yeah, we talked about that. And so, but I do think it's a good plan, and I think there's some good things in here, and I think that it has been used by past staff members, Paul Amerman and others, and, you know, as some of the things came into play here in the last two or three years, it's not like I think this was something that was pulled out and, oh, let's make sure that it happens like this. But again, I think that something like this could, in terms of what is the ongoing impetus and driving force behind what happens downtown, whether it's redevelopment or whether it's economic development. You know, there are certainly things that can be used to work with people to see, you know, how these things can actually be, can come to fruition with a lot of conversations and a lot of hard work. A plan is just maps and some paper, right? It really comes down to the people that are willing to put some willpower behind making the actual actions that matter happen. So, that's what I would add.
So, with that, I would say, you know, the EDA's goal, or the goal that we kind of laid out, is not to come to some decision tonight necessarily to say, yes, we need to do this, and we're going to allocate X dollars, and this is how it's going to get done. But probably more so to, you know, hear from Planning Commission and others, you know, how, what do we see in the value of this document? And if, and if collectively we think there is, to have at least a discussion about what the next steps might be to, to see what an update would look like. I, I personally don't envision a full-blown redo, an update of this plan, but I think we can, we could do something that is, you know, fairly expedient, but, but get enough meat on it that it shows us where we are today and, and confirms or denies, you know, what's laid out in the plan for the next five to 10 years as it exists. So, I guess with that, I'll open to any other comments or discussion? Planning, anyone?
Is there a certain, we had this big renaissance, let's call it, of building and things. Is there a certain thing that caused it? Was it a, was it a discount, is it tax, no breaks or anything like that? Is there anything that, I don't know, I wasn't on the planning committee back then, all of a sudden, boom, we had a lot of building happening and a lot of different things. Was there something that triggered that as far as what the city was doing?
I, I would say, from my perspective, and I've been on the EDA since its inception, so over 10 years, almost 11 years, I think, I would say absolutely not. With a couple, couple minor exceptions, everything that is going on now has been in the making for a long, long time. Everything that's going on down at Anchor Block is, is things that we've had our fingers in, and that's an interesting example because that is, that was a privately owned parcel, yet the city had some pretty clear views of what they would like to see down there. And it, it unfolded for the most part as envisioned, but we, the EDA and city staff got involved, and that transaction helped affect that transaction, did some good things for the city as part of that process. A great example of that is, and that's why I say that maybe it's subconscious that people are using this document, but one of the things that was laid out, and when this, when this was, when this was created, there was a number of work sessions with community member, it wasn't just commission people and staff, it was community people came in and they did, you know, all the sticky notes and what do you want and what do you like? And it was pretty well done and talked about things we needed, but the one thing that sticks out to me down there on the old Anchor Block site is the new thoroughfare, that, you know, that road that cuts through it to connect to McKnight. You know, that was done primarily for, you know, the heavy truck traffic as we envisioned more residential real estate up on the hill there and closer to Seventh. How do we route trucks, you know, in a different direction so they don't have to come through town to get out of here? And that became an integral piece of getting that deal done down there. So, and that was in this plan, specifically in this plan. Cut a road from Second over to McKnight and connect it, you know, to reroute truck traffic. So, so, no, and I don't think so. Even the, the, the old city hall site, this plan called for first, first level retailer, restaurant, housing above, that's a fair amount larger than originally contemplated because to Morgan's point, we wanted, there's some land consolidation that was done and moved a few people around and picked up a little more dirt and made a, you know, larger facility there, so to make it work economically for those developers.
So, we're business friendly, is where I think it is far as being able to places and people can get business.
Right. That's certainly...
The policies aren't, so that's why...
That's certainly a primary goal of the EDA, and, and, yeah, I don't think, no, a lot of, a lot of what's occurred has not just happened to us, and I talk about that all the time. Let's not let it happen to us. Let's get in front of it and try to make it what we want to do.
We've had sleep for like 30 years and also moved, so that shows a lot of foot.
Yeah, and it's, I think, I, we provided, the EDA provided a report to the council back in January, I think, and I'm speaking a little from memory here, but I, I think in the last, well, by the end of this year, over the last 24 months, we'll have brought online, I believe it's about $155 million of new taxable revenue to the city with these developments. So, pretty significant.
I certainly feel like the plan has helped the success of the city, I feel like it's really...
You know, oh, thank you. In, in part, you know, because of the plan. I think what, what a plan like this does is it, whether it consciously has everybody thinking in the same direction, or if individuals all kind of aim in the same direction, whether they're, you know, specifically coordinating with people or not, I think that's the beauty of a plan like, like this, that, that allows people to kind of move in the same direction, and, and that's a, that's a key component of success, you know, that comes out of something like this. That being said, I think that there's some updating that really would be valuable. You know, we've had, you know, a certain amount of stuff is accomplished. Let's get that solidified and see what kind of adjustments that means. Is there, you know, it seemed like when I kind of skimmed through this a little bit, it, it seemed like the balance was more towards the housing end of things as opposed to the business end of things and the commercial type of stuff. And, and a lot of times, it's rooftops before, you know, you get retail. And look at, you know, not only look at what that balance, you know, is now, but also where, you know, is the original balance that we had talked about in this document still valid? Should we be adjusting it in some way to, to think about it as being, you know, well, maybe, maybe we need to adjust it one way or another to further enhance the situation? This may not, you know, another point, this may not be exactly in the plan, but I think that the successes, you know, the continued success lies in the details of how things are completed. And I've been watching the Anchor site and how that's developed and think that that's, you know, very impressive. I think there's also kind of little pieces here and there that would further enhance it, you know, that, that entrance to the city there is still kind of a little bit shaky in terms of how people really recognize they're coming into North St. Paul. I think that's valuable for the city to, to have something like that. You know, maybe there's a little spiffing up that can be done on the west side of McKnight, you know, so that it, it carries that, you know, that quality throughout the, you know, the area. And those are just, you know, I don't mean to pick on any particular components, but to look at that as being, you know, these may be small pieces, but they probably have a, a oversized impact in terms of how successful the city is in terms of, you know, people's view of what's, you know, how it develops further, how people view it and so on. Let's see. And then, one of my favorites is the Century Highway 36 intersection, which still is kind of up in the air. You know, what impact does that have? I would imagine that that kind of inhibits the development in that area to some degree because people are wondering, well, what's it going to look like, you know? I think Fleet Farm intersection, Hadley, you know, and now everything's kind of laid out and there's, you know, anybody that's looking to develop some of those outlets, you know, they can say, they know exactly what it's going to look like for the next 50 years. You know, and to have a good notion of what that is, is, is going to be the thing that has kind of a big influence on, I think, a lot of developers and so on. Those may be kind of random thoughts, but...
Yeah, they're all, all great, actually, and I want to just speak to a couple of them, and I'll maybe go in a little bit of reverse order. First of all, Century and 36 are, we'll call Division. I think we call Division, don't we? Okay, since North, North St. Paul. Yeah, big issue. From a development standpoint, we, we've worked with a number of people, one pretty substantial, that wanted to, we, the city, EDA, acquired a number of properties down there trying to consolidate, create elbow room for developers to come in and do the things that, you know, give them the capacity to do the things that they, that they want to do from a, you know, make money standpoint, but, you know, also what's right for the city. Almost, almost to a group, it's very difficult to have a conversation with them, and we cannot tell them what's going to happen there. And they all want to know what's going to happen, and we all want to know. And they all want to know what's going to happen, and we all want to know what's going to happen, and we don't, and, and it's a problem. And, and, you know, we've asked, the EDA's asked council to make sure that it's a, a priority that we keep tabs on it, so we don't wind up what happened on Margaret, for those of you that are around when that happened, you know, we lose our access to the city. And this plan IDs that as a gateway property. As you, I'm sure you're aware, we, we've acquired the, the old BP site and, you know, have that leveled and flat and at least cleaned up for now, so, because that, that is, I mean, that's one of the primary gateways to our city, so we wanted to, you know, be what's right, you know, for, for all. On the point of some of the, I, I don't want to call them ancillary elements, but I think we, we've kind of looked at them from an EDA standpoint. One thing, when I went back and, and recently did a deep dive in here, was the discussion of things like downtown parks and gathering areas and green space. I, I can tell you, not that we do it intentionally, but we don't talk about parks in EDA meetings. It's just, it's just not a topic for us. Should it be? Probably, because it, you know, it, it's part of the puzzle. And I think that's, you know, that's part of why I, it would be easy enough for the EDA to go off and, you know, we have our own budget, we can go off and commission us, you know, an update on this thing and, and, and do it from our own eyes, but that doesn't make sense because there's so many other pieces like the parks pieces. You know, where are the downtown park, green spaces that we, we wanted as part of this transaction? And, and what are we all doing about that? That is, that's something we do have to revisit for sure. I just want, you know, I just want to speak to those two pieces specifically. Anybody else have thoughts or comments?
I think I'll probably, you know, repeat a lot of what everybody said, but I, you know, there's, I think there's tremendous value in updating this. It's, you know, I mean, like you said, Robert, the, the comp plan is, is the vision, but it's, it's sort of the framework where, you know, a plan like this is aspirational. It's, it's what, it's, it gives an image to where we want to go more so than the comp plan can. And I think it's, it's great just in that, but even, you know, like Morgan said, layering on top of this, I think that is, that could be super powerful too, because any, any town can put together a redevelopment plan, but, you know, we have the proof that things are actually moving towards what is here and that for potential investors and, you know, property owners, I, to me, that seems like that would be a huge value to, to see in the plan and to be able to say, look, here's where we were ten years ago and, you know, we've completed a lot of this stuff and we're moving forward with this and this, and, and there are some things that certainly can be updated to, to more align with what has happened, but it seems like an incredible, there's just a lot of value here to, to keep this going and to give it new life again, and especially, you know, just with the amount of housing that, that's coming in and all the new residents that are going to be here. I think, you know, the, the boom that has happened, I think is, that's probably nothing compared to what is going to come with more people and more inertia behind, behind this, so I think it's, the, the park aspect and pedestrian aspect of it are really important, like you said, and parking, I know we're going to talk about that in a little bit, but that, that's probably a huge portion of this too, and it's always a discussion of how do you balance giving people a, a place to park when they come, but also not necessarily catering just to that, to that element as well. And I think it's, it would be really helpful to, to give some new life to this and keep it moving. That's my, my view.
Is it appropriate for me to speak on the subject? Okay. I, I have input.
Sure.
As a resident from North St. Paul and city staff, I just want to say that I have the opportunity to work with multiple commissions, so I have heard different conversations and I've had conversations with Eric and with Morgan as well, and I think the key to some of these projects are going to be able to apply for, if we can apply for grant money. And I know Eric mentioned in our last conversation that there could be funding for a, a parking ramp, correct Eric? But it would have to coincide with an ex, the start of a new, not business, but construction project. So we couldn't, we couldn't apply for that grant for the parking lot, for the restaurant like we've been talking about, but if we had a nut, something else in the works, you know, possibly for next year. So to make a long story short, I think if we did this long-term planning and had the resources that we, in place to be able to apply for these grants, I think that we would be very successful in moving this forward.
I think that's part of the discussion that was brought up earlier in regards to a potential developer that might be coming into town who's looking at a pretty significant size property in our downtown that would be a redevelopment piece. And, and that's, I think that's what he's looking for, his conversation, what are you looking for in the downtown? And if that's, you know, a piece of the puzzle that we need to look at, I think that would be identifiable to him that, you know what, possibly might be a parking ramp with retail and partial more housing, I don't know. But I think with that person asking what our wants are, you know, I think we should be able to say that, you know, it would be more parking or whatever, so. But I think that's a, a good discussion that we should have, meeting with this potential developer, because he wants to know our needs or what our wants are for the next development, because this is a substantial piece that could be developed.
Lisa?
Go ahead, Eric.
Thanks, Lisa. I, I hope everybody can hear me. Yeah, it, it sounds like we're maybe moving on to the parking side of the discussion, but one last thing or to expand on what Lisa mentioned, we did talk a little bit about funding sources. The LCDA still funds pre-development, but they have changed the program a little bit. I think you could apply for the same project area you have now, but I think you'd be in the boat of, you know, what other people apply and, and, you know, how much funding's available. A couple of things I would add that may make the, an application for revision of this more attractive would be both if you included more entities. The advantage of the LCDA is that it's funded by the Semin County Metro area, so if we discussed talking with Oakdale about Century, you know, traditionally that could be an issue because that's Washington County, that wouldn't be an issue here with the LCDA. They also are very keen on funding efforts that involve local community groups, be they nonprofits or, or city entities, but particularly with some of the agencies that exist downtown would be attractive. And the last thing I would say is they want to tie to transit, and I know that a couple meetings ago, we had a presentation from Washington County about what they're evaluating on Thirty-Six, as well as just getting across Thirty-Six, particularly McKnight, looking at the, you know, the target and the outlots in front of it. I think if you expanded the footprint of the plan a little bit, might make it more competitive for funding. All that being said, it's, it's a really low expense to apply and find out if you, you know, you get something awarded, so however the city chooses to, to go forward, you know, Lisa, Morgan and I could talk about how to apply for those met council funding.
Okay. So, we got a reverb there. If we, that's annoying. We good? I, I think in regards to funding, I had, we, we have not had any discussions at the EDA in terms of seeking grants to update this plan, I, I'm not saying that's not a good idea. The, but I think all of that really leads to the second part of this, is that I, I'm hearing a general consensus that it's, it's not a bad idea to, to revisit this and, and update it at some level, to be determined. Is that, any objections to that? So with that, I think that the, I think it's appropriate for the EDA to take a lead on this, however, I, I also think that it would be of value to have a couple participants from planning and staff, appropriate participants, to discuss how that might un, you know, how this might unfold, to what level do we want to update it, what kind of timeline, what kind of budget? And so I, I'm not sure, I think in one of these meetings I suggested a subcommittee and I got smacked by the city attorney, so I won't call it a subcommittee. But I'll propose a, a, you know, that we get some volunteers and conduct a, I guess we'll call it an exploratory meeting. I think it would be a good idea to have, you know, Morgan attend or, for sure, and a couple people from planning, a couple from the EDA, and certainly a council rep or two never hurts, so.
I think you can have a subcommittee. I, I don't, I don't know if.
Physical altercation?
There was, yes, it was, it was pretty ugly.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would agree. I mean, if we, but I, again, I want to, you know, we do have, we will be looking for a new city manager, I want to make sure that, you know, he's on board too, you know, maybe in the meantime, we can talk and put that committee together. Morgan might be able to give us some, an estimate of what it would take to update this or.
And there may be things that are real easy from a staff level that, you know, just fit within existing budgetary constraints in terms of, you know, a light lift to get us to the next level. And so, and like you said, it doesn't have to be apply for funds and do some sort of major update, but I think some further conversations would be very easy but very productive, even as we're, you know, bridging that gap with a new city manager. Certainly no reason to delay that, I would say, to at least get, get going with those conversations.
Elaine, any thoughts?
No, I guess what I'm, kind of what I'm hearing really is, we're not talking about a major update, but it sounds to me it's more like incorporating things that weren't necessarily as well-covered in the existing plan and then particularly based upon what has occurred over, what, the nine years since it was put in place. And just to clarify one item, one of the triggers also for creating the redevelopment master plan was our former zoning code, which as you recall, had the diversified district, which was that district where nothing was allowed except via a conditional use permit, so we had a, we had a comprehensive plan and a zoning code that really made it extremely difficult to develop in that area once the land became available. So I know the planning commission then really started working on just driving, getting the zoning code changed, that occurred at essentially the same time that this was developed. So that actually is what made it a bit easier to finally develop some of that area. So my take on this is that these, the parking issue and the, I'll call it the transit issue, the pedestrian issue, the bicycling issue, the whole how do you get around downtown? How do you make it walkable? Because we're not going to fill it up with parking, you know, we've got to kind of assume we want people walking into town and walking up and down once they get here and not just moving their car from spot to spot. I think that all could be incorporated to more of a degree than it is now. There's a little bit about, you know, pedestrian-friendly sepulcher, but there's really nothing on the, on Seventh, or how do bikes get in and out? How do we connect to the trail? We always talk about that, and this is non-specific about that, so I think there could be more meat on the bones in some of those areas that support what's already happened and just make it more livable, so to speak, what with the new housing, and hopefully then that drives new business.
I think that's a good point, because, you know, we, we have this highway of bicycles out, outside of our door here, and we're probably one of the only cities that's really connected to a downtown, and with all this development that's going on with the, you know, new restaurant coming in and, you know, it, it can be attractive to the bicycles to come in, and it's going to draw people, and how do we do that? So I would, I would say yes, as part of this, adding a little meat to, you know, figuring out how we're going to deal with that. I think that's a good, good point.
Yeah, certainly, you know, that is something that absolutely has to be incorporated, you know, what's taken place and, and what are now the missing pieces that, and a great example, if you drive right down Seventh here is the brand-new sidewalk as part of the street improvement that stops a hundred yard shorts, a hundred yard short of all the new housing. Why not take it all the way to the housing? I'm not a planner, but it seems to make sense if we should do something like that. So why, why don't I propose this, to bring closure to this item? Why don't I propose that we have a, a working session with, I, I would ask for two council reps, two reps from planning and two reps from the EDA. We'll invite Morgan.
And Eric.
And Eric, and just have a working session and, and figure out how to take the next steps on this, is that?
We should have the city manager maybe involved with that also, acting or new or whatever.
Perfect. So Lisa, if we can put that as an action item, I guess, coming out of this meeting, and we'll get some dates together, and Elaine, I'll, you can work on twisting arms for volunteers on your side and I'll do the same, and.
Good.
Perfect, okay.
I'm sure I'll just have to shoo them away.
We, we can, I, I think it would be okay to have more than two, but I, I would say at least two from each group.
We'd want a quorum, so.
Yeah.
Work it out. What's that?
We got a quorum up there.
I talked to city attorney. Talked to city attorney and, and we're okay.
We're not doing any business.
Correct.
Okay, moving, then it's time probably to move into, to the downtown parking needs that gets, you know, that's associated with this as well, so I'll just, I'll mention one thing, and that is, again, this was, I want to say twenty thirteen or fourteen, when we got the Resilient Communities grant, and parking downtown was one of the study areas that they looked at and what we could do, what we need and what we probably, what we have and so forth. And I don't think that's been taken off the shelf since it was put together and presented. So that's a start, that to me is a starting point, that gives actually a baseline of back then, this is what we had. As far as the needs, I think, given the new development that's occurred, that As far as the needs, I think, given the new development that's occurred, that might be different now. But I just wanted to mention that that was an initial attempt to look at what the city could do. So anything else you want to, where do you want to start on that?
Yeah, I don't know that, you know, A, I would say that one thing that I've discovered in over a decade of being on the EDA is, you know, whether we pay out of pocket or get grants and get these great studies done. And then, to your point, a lot of them wind up on the shelf and, you know, and I won't say they all do, but we have to revisit some of this good work that we've paid for and put it to use. But we can, we can certainly start there. And I think that, you know, from a parking perspective, it's something that would, in my mind, certainly be baked into any update of this redevelopment master plan. I'm not as familiar with that document. I think I'm aware of it, but I, I didn't study it in the last month, sorry. So, but yeah, well, let's, we'll pull that off and take a look at it too. My, the EDA's, you know, point of putting this on the agenda and the discussion is not to necessarily talk about any specific project or something that we're bringing forth, but was just to raise the issue that parking is, is a problem. It will become a bigger problem and, and we need to deal with it. And as part of that process, it's, again, I think it's important that we, as an EDA, if we start pushing something, which we do intend to, that we connect with planning and draw on your expertise and your knowledge about, you know, the, what's desired, what you hear from the residents at the public hearings, your own expertise about what we should have. And so that's not something that we, you know, want to go alone on either. And that's why I wanted to raise that issue tonight is, because it's, we don't want to, you know, sit in our bubble and create things in a vacuum and then, and then have other commissions and council within the, you know, in the city, you know, decide that, oh, this is, this is terrible, you didn't consider X, Y, and Z. Well, yeah, we'd like to know what X, Y, and Z is upfront, so I'm not sure how to get there. But, but I think part of the, part of the idea of the joint meetings is that EDA members understand a little bit better about what planning is and what they do and what expertise lies here and vice versa. So, so I don't know that there's a lot more discussion about it other to raise, other than to raise the issue and say that it's, it's common.
Yep. I think, you know, the council is going to be seeing a capital improvement plan that's coming up here pretty quick. I think it's actually our next.
Draft.
Draft, right. So we are identifying a lot of the needs for the city in regards to capital improvements. And, you know, one of them is we have a giant parking lot sitting behind, you know, Seventh there that really needs attention. We've got possibility for electric car hookups, and that's been put on hold until we figure out the plan for that parking lot back there. Brian, I don't know if you want to just mention that briefly because that's something new that, you know, if you're, if we're looking 10, 20 years, that's a need that we're going to have to have that we're just kind of, you know, we're really not looking at it right now and, because it doesn't, it's like the old telephone, you know? I remember as a kid seeing that video telephone and going, there's no way that's going to happen. Look where we are today. I mean, so these electric cars and how we're going to, how we're going to charge them, that's a big issue that we got to really look at. And Brian, you're the electric guy and tell me how we're going to power all this.
Great question. And it's a hot topic among the many. So even what they're doing in the downtown for the duck line. It is on. I don't talk very much.
I think we have a problem with that microphone. That's always been an issue.
Okay. So yes, we did, as we redid the downtown, we put a duck line in going along parallel to Seventh Avenue on both sides of the road with anticipation of electric vehicles becoming so popular and the direction we're going, because it's going to be a heavy load. There's a lot to figure out of, you know, timing of those charging stations, whether or not it's at home. We have major manufacturers that are only going to be dealing in electric vehicles here within the next decade. So we have big changes coming with that. But yeah, I don't know if, probably the planning commission wasn't aware of that. Through our power agency, MMPA, we, each city in the power agency is getting a charging station, and we thought probably the best place for that would be, we're just concerned about doing it in the downtown along Seventh Avenue because of parking is such a premium. So we thought maybe the parking lot behind the K and J side over there might be the best place for that. I think we found an appropriate spot, and when we look at more seriously redoing that, there's other things that we need to do in that parking lot as well, as well as the lighting, but one of them is the charging station. So that is, we was going to do it this year, but I think next year is the best time to be looking at that. So looking forward to have that out there. It'll be similar to the one we have downtown here in, or in our parking lot, just out front of the fire station there. So it'll be a dual station charging.
Good. Thank you.
Can I ask another question since?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So I wasn't involved at this level previously, but it might have been during the, when Elaine mentioned that grant that we had for resilient communities, when we redid Margaret for a while there and they put in the bike lanes down there, I was just wondering if you could share, what did we learn from that? What to do, what not to do? I know there were some people that were very happy to see it and there's some, not so much, but seems appropriate with this topic here.
Yeah, and I think that's a part of the whole living street document that we got to, you know, relook at. Morgan, if you've got some input.
Yeah, so that was a grant-funded effort that WSB did play a role in. And we did a, we did a demonstration project, if you will. It was always intended to be temporary, and so one component of that project was to do a temporary on-street sidewalk, if you will, on, on First Street, I want to say, from the high school north on, on the west side of First Street, north to Seventeenth, I believe. And so that kind of connected the high school past Richardson Elementary, if I got my streets correct there. And what we found from that temporary demonstration project is that it was heavily used. And that was a street that, long before my time, but there were previous discussions about potentially adding sidewalks, you know, do you have sidewalks? Do you not have sidewalks? So that was just an opportunity to see, you know, if there was a dedicated space, which in that situation was just temporarily striped off, and I think there were some delineators or something to give pedestrians a little bit more of a buffer from the vehicles. But through observations during that period, which was, I don't know, maybe eight weeks or something like that, but it did get used really heavily by a lot of children coming in and out of school, just people walking north and south along that street. The other component of that study was a demonstration project on Margaret, which were, those were temporary bike lanes that were put in from Seventh Avenue on Margaret north to, I want to say all the way north to Nineteenth, so just right at the park there at the beach at Silver Lake. And that one was a little bit less conclusive. So we found, again, through observations through, during that interim period, before and after, right? So we needed a baseline to compare, you know, if we had dedicated bike lanes, what would, what would happen versus just kind of the existing condition, which is not dedicated bike lanes, but there are shoulders in some areas. And so from a inconclusivity standpoint, I can say that at that time, what we observed is that there wasn't an increase or a decrease either way in terms of, you know, putting those lanes in. At that time, we saw about the same amount of bike traffic using it both directions, north and south on Margaret. Now, since that time, city council did authorize some feasibility preliminary study on kind of a corridor concept for Margaret Street, again, in that same area there from downtown north to Silver Lake is kind of a gateway into the Silver Lake Park area. And so we developed some section concepts. So when I say a section, that means kind of like a cross-section of the roadway that shows, you know, where, where do the cars go? Where do the pedestrians go? Are there sidewalks? Do we have shoulders for bikes? That sort of thing. And I don't have it memorized, but I do believe that we incorporated a lot of the elements in the living streets plan, and it was a multimodal approach and certainly more than we have right now from north to south. And it was also designed to be more of a consistent gateway from one end to the other because right now the road kind of changes in character. Once you get north of Seventeenth Avenue, it's a little bit different width, it's a little bit different feel, I guess, right now as constructed. And so the thought at that time is that, you know, we now know that there is an opportunity to improve that corridor if and when, you know, funds or the city council feels to move in that direction. We do kind of have that as a, as a feasibility study already received and discussed by council that can be brought back. And we know that, you know, it is feasible, right? So that, that didn't come out of that temporary study, but we do know that from a multimodal approach, there is an approach that could happen from a design standpoint for a capital reinvestment in that Margaret Avenue corridor from downtown north, which I agree, it's from a, from a logical connector, north-south, and kind of a, I guess, gateway into, you know, a gem of the North St. Paul Park system. It makes a lot of sense, and there's a lot of opportunity there, right? So, and that is quite a few years old, maybe four or five years old since the city council saw that, but, but it does exist. And just like all these other studies that we're talking about, those things can be revisited and rebrought forth and helps to have some institutional knowledge within the community to remember that we've got that, but that was completed and done as well.
The other thing when we're talking about that, and I know there was a project proposed for across from City Hall at one point that didn't go through. I think it was a housing one. And I remember we talked at the time at the planning commission about having some kind of bike route in from the gateway, you know, when you, because you come right across. I mean, it's right here. And potentially doing that on Margaret as well. And I remember the demonstration project, but I also recall that nothing was done with Margaret to make it pleasant to ride on once you get across Thirty-Sixth. So that really didn't help. That's a pretty ruddy road when you're biking. But the other thing I'll mention, and it goes back to parking, but it has to do with bikes, and that is bicycle parking. I mean, we, you know, we do the roads, we do the parking lots, we do the streets with our angle parking, and we redo the sidewalks, and we have no bike parking anywhere downtown.
We bought all these bike racks years, years ago, and I don't think we have them now. Go ahead, go ahead.
A reminder again of another plan is we have the revital, downtown revitalization plan that is all about the streetscape. And one of the things, I recall this very well, when the planning commission reviewed it, we said, we need more bike, where's the bike racks? Again, it's a whole multimodal concept, particularly when you have people living downtown and close to downtown, you know, and the M and I homes in the apartment building there, so close to the trail, zip in on a bike or walk in. I just think we don't pay enough attention to that. We are, we're very car-focused, as many communities are. And, and I just think the way we're developing with the benefit of having a downtown, it's to our detriment not to really think about that.
Yeah, it's a parallel between, we, Seventh.
Absolutely.
Right, right.
Yeah.
By the way, I'm lashed to one of the, like.
Did you put your quarter in the meter out there? But I would agree that, you know, we did, that was a topic of the EDA, and I remember Jerry Bell mentioned, that was one of the things that he had mentioned before he left as being chair was more bike racks downtown, and I think they all got taken out, but there wasn't, we need a plan for it, you know, where, where they're going to be placed. Correct.
You want to integrate all of these things and not just slap things here and there, and then it really doesn't do what you want it to do.
Right.
People really didn't know what they were for. I received, I received several pictures where people parked their bikes, I'm not saying five feet away from the bike rack.
Yep, yep.
They didn't know what it was for.
It didn't say bike rack on it, you know? But I think.
And the almost, you know, like those sculpture kind of thing, there's a lot of things you can do with bike racks.
Right.
That aren't just, you know.
Right.
Three spots or five spots.
And I, and I give a lot of credit to Rotary Park, you know, Rotary, the Rotary Club has put a lot of money into that park down there, and now they're going to put some signage down there. And we really want to make sure that signage is for something, a gateway into our city because people are parking there, people are, that's kind of the hub. And then to direct them out of there, how do we get them out of there, into the downtown, and then back out? That's, I think, you know, something we really got to be conscious of because they're going to be spending money down there for a new sign. John?
I would just add for the benefit of all here that staff's position is that the downtown, as it, some of the improvements that we've seen on Seventh Avenue remains very flexible, and there is lots of opportunity for, for bike parking or bike racks to be added. It's a very simple thing to do. I agree that there's not a plan that shows exactly where they should be, but I think that's a very simple discussion and something that could be implemented by staff fairly easily, maybe with some good discussions in terms of, you know, what the, what makes the most sense, or staff can certainly make some recommendations. But just to point out that, you know, that wasn't a removal and then they'll never come back. I think that it was always intended, and there's a lot of flexibility to be able to add that in later.
I was just going to mention, a colleague of mine called me on the phone. He said, I think I went through North St. Paul, but I'm not sure. So that's what I received for him is like, I think there was a snowman over there, I was down in this hole, but, you know, we have the Margaret Street Bridge, it's huge. That's just a, North St. Paul welcomes you. You know, some billboard that show that, hey, you know, we're going underneath, you can either exit if you're going to, going to the west or the east, you know, at, there's a location. Right now, we got that little sign that says North St. Paul on the road that, you know, you miss because it's like every other sign. So, I mean, that's just the thing too. If we're trying to get cars in, you know, and people in that way, or are we trying to get people, more people that live here that walk and bike down to there? So I hope it's both. I hope we're taking that, so we have to understand that Minnesota's a state where a lot of people drive. And there's, you know, there's people that do the biking too, so. But, I mean, just some kind of a signage, because like I said, we run parallel with Thirty-Sixth and time to figure it out, or like he said, he didn't even know he went through it. He's, I think I went through North St. Paul, that was his comment.
I remember the council at the time when they're redoing Thirty-Sixth, they had a really hard time with MinDOT in regards to signage. I remember council member Walzak fought with them, you know, we need signs saying North St. Paul, and they just wouldn't allow it back then. But now that's kind of the norm now. Now they're making more.
They welcome you.
Right, exactly. So I would agree that, you know, any of our entrance points into our city, we should be welcoming, you know, if it's down in McKnight or up in Century or.
Because right now in McKnight, you, you take south, is that our entrance to downtown North St. Paul? Is it the next one up? Is that the entrance? It's just really kind of convoluted off of McKnight to get there.
Right, right. I would agree.
Thank you.
I do have some more information to share on that, being as that I've been working with the Rotary on their signage for that park. I did some research to find out that there was a wayfinding plan, and the council did adopt a resolution for that back in 2016. So I just wanted to make sure that what the Rotary was doing was in correspondence with what you had decided that would be good for the city. And with that being said, when I looked at that wayfinding plan, there was signage above the bridges that had been proposed. So do you think it would be good to revisit that plan again as well?
Yes, I mean, I, that's part of why we need to identify that down there is, when it was identified with the wayfinding, that it's an important point into our city for the bike traffic off of. the bike traffic off of, off of the gateway trail. Brian?
I mean, not only MNDOT, we have issues with signage in our.
So, once that wayfinding plan was adopted, staff did have several meetings with MNDOT about signage on the Margaret Street Bridge. We even cited specific examples, including when the US Open, or the PGA Championship was being played at Hazeltine in, I don't know what year that was, 2000s somewhere, but one of the bridges over 212 temporarily had City of Chaska, home of the PGA Championship. And not just, you know, reflective signage that you might see, like, kind of to your point, that, you know, it's just another sign on the side of the highway, these were actual, you know, metal letters that were mounted on the side of the bridge in a font that looked really nice. I mean, it was relief, it wasn't painted on, it was like sculpture almost, right? Very easy to see, you drove by it, you could see it from a mile away, you drove under it, you knew that you were, you know, heading into Chaska, you knew that it was the home of the PGA Championship. Now, since that time, they've removed that, for whatever reason, and then just update, this is in 2016, so not that long ago, we were kind of getting a hard no on, on bridge signage, and we're getting a definite hard no on any roadside signage, because there's a specific, from a safety standpoint, density of signs that MNDOT allows on the side of a highway or a freeway, because now what we have, a freeway is from, from west to east, once you get to, you know, 120, that's a traffic signal, so it's no longer a freeway, but west of that point, it is a freeway, and they're very strict about what they allow. And so, I think there's still options for conversations, and there's options for things that can be pursued by the city, but just as a reference point, you know, we have had, and it go, and our conversations with MNDOT, to your point, with different past council members, they go way back, and we have not been able to make a lot of progress there. But, but I think there's opportunity, and one of the opportunities is knowing that the future interchange at 120 and 36 is going to involve two counties and two cities, we're, we are going to be, we should be at the table all the way through the process. There have been some conversations recently about, you know, at least having a more realistic placeholder on the horizon with respect to partnership between Ramsey County and Washington County, and dollars allocated in draft transportation plan by Ramsey County, and also MNDOT, I believe, draft, not officially committed, but, but good progress compared to in the past. And so, again, signage on new interchange bridges, similar to what was out there in Chaska, which I think seems reasonable, you know, MNDOT's always worried about safety and distracting drivers and things like that, but I think they're, to your point, Mr. Mayor, there's, you know, there's a way, when you're at the table, to move through those things, and, you know, aesthetic treatments on bridges are always a big deal to local communities, and they want their own flavor, and they want the wrought iron rail on the bridge as you drive under it to have something to do with the community, whether that's stamped out, you know, snowmen or, or words or lettering or whatever, that's something that we got to fight for, and, and maybe, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, sometimes the local community partners on some of that, but again, there's a lot of benefit in terms of not driving through North St. Paul and not knowing you're in North St. Paul, right? I think that's, that's what we want to try to push for. So, again, it, it's important to be at the table, to have these discussions, so we know what you want, and then really push for them when you get the opportunity.
You can't just put it up and they won't notice it?
Hang a banner.
Might be there for a while, yeah.
Put it in art installation.
Planning can, but EDA can do that.
So, I think this piece is going to get incorporated into the, these two.
I do, yeah.
And end up being incorporated into the potential update.
Yeah, wayfinding is certainly a topic in the plan presently. Parking, not so much, but it certainly would be incorporated into the update as we move forward, so. So, I think we've accomplished, you know, our goal tonight, to, I do think that it's important that we do occasionally get together, EDA and planning, just to, you know, have these discussions, and it helps me as an individual, I think it helps the EDA to understand, you know, some of the things that are important to planning, you know, for the community and vice versa, so.
Okay.
Appreciate the time, and so, we'll follow up with the, what are we calling it? Sub, oh, I can't call it a subcommittee.
We'll call it something, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll call it something. Work group.
Working.
Work group.
Task force.
Task, I love that, task force.
All right, then we'll move on to reports from council liaisons. I don't think we probably have any, no?
I just, I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission, the EDA, you know, with the efforts from all of us, you know, this is where we are today, you know, we've come a long way in the last 10 years, and to your point, Elaine, developers out there, we're on the radar now, which we weren't before because of what we had, diversified, whatever they were, you know, and now we're, you know, updating all the codes, you know. Developers really look at that and understand now that North St. Paul's on the move, and they're more friendlier than they were 10, 10, 15 years ago, and I think that's with the help from all of us in this room, so, thank you to all of you, I appreciate it.
We all say thank, you're welcome. Reports from commissioners, anybody have anything they want to report? I'm not going to go person by person, since this isn't really a meeting as we normally have a meeting.
I'll just say, I work at MNDOT, but I'm just a hydraulic guy, so I can't.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
I'm not a side guy. But I do acknowledge that they can get a little stubborn sometimes, but it is always worth, you're right, Morgan, it's always worthwhile to have that conversation, so, keep having it, I would say. And one thing, too, on the funding, the MNDOT State Aid Office does solicitations, I think, every other year for a safe route to school, and I know you mentioned, that might be an option, too, as well, so, keep your eyes open for the next solicitation. Margaret Street, if you can identify, you know, if it's school-aged kids that are going to be using this pedestrian facility, there might be some funding, 80 or 90 percent eligibility, so.
That's good to know.
We got a mole.
Yeah.
And the application in.
Send them over. I'd like to expand upon, run some counts for you.
All right. Excellent. Then, I guess, we'll just adjourn. I don't think I need to do a motion and a second and all that.
I think Al needs to.
You want me to do that? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
If you want.
I'll move, we adjourn, is there a second?
Come on, Al.
Al, second.
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, we're adjourned at 7:51.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.